Can you hear me alright? Is that better? Uh, thank you all for coming this evening. Uh, we've got a fairly extensive agenda for tonight and I do want to move along as quickly as possible. Um, a couple of recommendations, uh, I wanted to mention. Thank, uh, Monica Frumpong for serving on the board as a student representative. Uh, she's a great asset, but I have to say, uh, I think I enjoy the most about Monica was the speech she made in graduation. Her act, uh, is like we have to go away. So, uh, thank you Monica for your service on the board and we look to you. Uh, also, uh, this province in person, seeing as helping people apply as long as possible to this meeting. Thank you again. Uh, a couple of things I just wanted to touch on very quickly. Uh, again, this is sort of in the context of our graduation. At some point, we'll discuss more of those for next year. One of the things that I'd like to focus on is an explanation for what um, it came to my attention, graduation and in a town meeting, I'd say, um, that we're anticipating seeing more of the board there. I don't think that one, you don't really understand, uh, what did we get in the instance of the board. You don't necessarily understand what the decision process is. Um, I think that you should focus on maybe looking at some of the events that happened over the course of the year. And figure out ones that we should definitely attend and ones that are nice to attend. Um, but I think that's something that we should be so attentive to. Um, in terms of, again, I'll just repeat expectations with the board from my side. We are simply expecting the board members of, uh, having, uh, regent packets, uh, that should attend the regular monthly meetings and especially the subcommittee meetings. Actively participate. Those were just my moments for today's meeting. Alright. Uh, let's move on to, um, a couple of amendments. We begin with the amendments from May 6th. Uh, that was, um, meeting in Southwood, Math Mills. Uh, was there a motion to accept amendments? When David, seconded by Alan. Um, any changes? Here. I might have one change, I just didn't know if we should mention, uh, the name of your prime academic's teacher. For increasing point six to one point oh. That's just my opinion. So here. It's not important, it's right now, it was a favor of motion right here. All these. That passes. Alright, move on to, uh, amendments from May 2nd. There are motions to accept this way. By Alan, seconded by Steve. Any changes? I might have one, uh, from page three. In the board discussion about being taught is only the team. The board had requested to hear back from this team on their progress. It's what the team needs. A one, no. And that is. Any other changes? Alright, there is a motion to accept that one amendment was in favor. And all these passes. Also, we have the minutes from May 3rd. That was the, uh, margin hearing at, uh, the MS. There's no motion to accept this right now. By Alan, seconded by David. Any changes here? Right, now. That's this. Alright, no. Changes here. Any laws in favor? Any laws? Right, that passes. Um, move on to, um, I might, we know justice to be taken. And justice. What I'm gonna understand was. Um, we also need to, uh, Let's make that fourteen point two. And that is an executive session to discuss. Um, there was some talk, uh, about the choice transportation subcommittee. We want to present this meeting. Did you hear anything? And then, um, we also need to, I think, we're behind the new business. We have some positions to approve. Okay, well, I'm a personnel analyst. Alright, um, we'll move on to item six point oh, public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Okay, fine. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm Margaret Leach-Opeland, the outgoing chairperson of the RSC one, the chairman advisor. News of the RSC one.
This program has spread among leaders in other districts and professional organizations, uh, resulting in requests for consulting on implementing the community-based models in other areas of Maine. We know that RSC one is not in a position to fund such work. So, the RSC one ECAC sought funding from the John T. Gorman Foundation to provide consultation supported by useful print and video materials to other, uh, districts, beginning in September and going through June of next year. And the foundation has awarded us, uh, twenty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars just to do that. As you know, Rosalie Perkins' time was cut from sixty percent. That's from eighty percent to sixty percent last year. So, this grant will allow her to work one day a week and provide services to a minimum of two districts a month, including onsite consultation, telephone availability, and sharing of resources and materials. Rosalie will produce those materials and she will work in concert with the main Department of Education pre-K consultants and the main roads to quality accreditation project to make sure that all existing resources for districts are included. Rosalie will also contract to develop a video of RSC one stakeholders expressing their thoughts about our pre-K, including some of you, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Alright, uh, we will move on to staff reports. Uh, we'll begin with item seven point one, an update on the teacher evaluation process. Do you want to start with Patrick?
We just wanted to give a brief update. The, I think it was in the fall that we had Kerry Batton speak to you, as well as myself, about the staff evaluation process, how it was working, and we wanted to follow up with you now that this year has gone by. And I thought Bud would be a good person to come tonight and talk about what he does for the process and other additional things that he does to, uh, check on the quality of what is going on in our classrooms, as well as we'll talk to you about maybe some modifications that we were looking to make to the system. So, I'll let Bud start and then I'll chime in afterwards before we take questions.
Good evening. I've given you a whole
Maybe I'll just second Bud. I'm gonna turn this man off.
Oh, I was enjoying it. Suffer. Again, good evening. And Pac, and I've given you some samples of some of the documents that I usually use throughout the district. Our supervision evaluation process is based on a series of formal and informal observations. There are at least a minimum of two formal observations, and those are documented using document number A compacted. One of those formal observations are announced when one is unannounced. If a formal observation is announced, there is a pre-conference and a post-conference. An unannounced obviously wouldn't have a pre-conference and it would be just a post-conference. Document B gives a series of questions that I used prior to a pre, prior to a pre-conference and during the pre-conference to learn from the teacher what standards are involved in the lesson, what learning targets, both supportive learning targets and long-term and short-term learning targets. If they want any focus feedback, or if I want any focus feedback. Instructional literacy strategies, assessment practices, and student engagement. Post-conference, which is document C, is just one typical thing to do post-conference. Is a minimum, excuse me, is a reflection on lesson, constructive feedback, setting goals, and any additional observations that's needed. All these observations look at planning and preparation, classroom instruction, student assessment, and classroom management. And together, they put together to form the sum due evaluation, which also includes professional development and professional responsibilities to school communities. And those are documents I, H9, and G, GH9, how's that? Once we've done formal observations and informal observations of teachers, some of the teachers are doing quite well, continuing to move forward. Others need some sort of support in particular areas. We advise we share literature focused on a particular area. We would observe peers, observing peers who are of a position or distinguished in the area. We ask teachers to do that. We'd ask them to receive feedback from peers based on observations. They may participate in school-wide focus walkthroughs, that's document D. They also may participate in school-wide professional development, such as our APG, that's document E. Example of that professional development. Focused observations by administrators, external professional development outside the district. And if necessary, we would move a staff member to a continuing, continuing evaluation status, to a CBS, and bring that process through a set of tangible goals, create an action plan, evaluate the progress, revise the action plan if necessary. Or we may pull up a staff member and back up to the top list of things to be providing support, continue to provide support for that staff member. How do administrators get a good picture of how effective a teacher is? A pre-conference and post-conference conversation around an observation, formal and informal observations, sharing instructional practices with peers and administrators, walkthroughs, talking to students about it, about their learning. Obviously, the more time you can spend in classrooms during teacher instruction and student engagement, where it included a picture is of the effectiveness of a teacher. And the documents that you have, I'm just trying to quickly walk through them just for side effects. Document A is used, as I said, with every formal and observation, whether it's, uh, uh, excuse me, whether it's an announced one or an unannounced one. Document B, looking in, was a set of questions, a series of questions that a staff member may fill out before a pre-conference, before an observation. Or these are talking points when you have a pre-conference and during a follow-up conference after the observation. Document C is just a reflection that we ask many times for our staff members to do after an observation. Document D is one of the walkthroughs, the structure during the course of the year, in which teachers, some volunteer, some are asked to participate, and they focus on any number of literacy practices or ELBAS, not just strategies. And this document is used kind of what you did, but a little bit more formally, because you came to the school, you walked around, and you walked through the conference. This is a lot more organized than the debriefing session that happens after each walkthrough. Document E is just an example of the focus by the staff on reading strategies and teaching strategies where each staff member during the course of the, uh, three to four month period, went in, tried out best practice in the classroom, and came back and worked in groups, ninety minutes after school, looking at what worked, what didn't work, refocusing, going back out and finding another strategy or trying to improve that particular strategy. So, that's just one of our internal staff development activities that we do. Haven't used the next document F very much, but it is one that as an administrator, I do use or it's part of the walkthrough where teachers are going, looking at some of the active, gotta go through skill development, concept innings going on in the classroom, and recording that, and conversations about that. Document G is a goal-setting document that we use as a district, the staff members, some of they set, some of you set, and then creating an action plan, and implementing the action plan, and of course, the, uh, Document H is their assessment of that progress on the, their particular goals. And then we have a post, uh, end of the year goal-setting conference, excuse me, end of the year goal-oriented conference, going over many of the items and terminology that we're self-assessing. And document I is the summative evaluation and our documentation that we pull from informal observations, formal observations, conversations with the staff at APG time or staff development time, talking to staff in the walkthrough, all that, and then put together the summative evaluation. And document J is the document that we have as administrators, our timetable, current structure, and who we observe, who we observe, and how often we observe.
How many such evaluations have you put formal past, the twelve on past year?
We had, that, that most likely this year, we had thirteen, uh, staff members who are under formal law enforcement to review two formal observations and two informal observations. So, two, four, or the fifty-sixth, I didn't even remember.
And similar processes are going on at those schools, correct? Do you have a summary statement or statistical report regarding to outcomes?
I think beyond the knowledge, but I do just kind of want to say that we feel that the process is working. It's very time-consuming. We prefer as administrators to have more opportunities to get in class for a shorter period of time, because right now, we're only expected or required to go in four times during the course of the year. We'd like to get in one, eight or nine, ten times, but that's not easy to do with the current documentation that we have to deal with the observations.
Any other conclusions on this process, what the result?
I think the process works. Uh, staff is, as I said, um, are into the walkthroughs, are into holding seven goals, one over goals. Many of the goals in the last few years, the last couple of years at Math Mills School, like the rest of the district, are data-driven using the VA scores, and that has been very helpful, because the teachers are all focused. And we have a special population which are struggling, which we improve and collaborate with like members, so we try to find instruction for them and look at their NWA scores as part of the end of the year conference evaluation.
There any other questions?
There's one question. Do you wish to say something, especially on the part of particularly your veteran teachers, high-quality teachers, in participating in the improvement of the observation of the younger teachers?
I find it to be extremely positive to teach it, but I'm still not sure the thing is that, um, just a, um,
Yeah, I think there's a team aspect to it within the building, or each of the buildings that, uh, if you're attending a listen, it really enthusiasm for support of your veterans. Uh, it has to have a positive impact.
It does, and it grows also happens, because you have the enthusiasm of the new teachers coming out into the field with, who are probably more skilled with technologies and more skilled with, uh, the best strategies, best practice strategies. And we often, as we said, I said, APG time happens once a month, about ninety minutes, and everybody's engaged in social worker guidance, counselor, as a teacher. Everybody's involved in some way, uh, looking at their practice. So, if that's engaged, then that's always a positive experience.
Sure.
Correct. And the walkthroughs, we, we had to shut down a number of people going through the walkthroughs this time around, because we just didn't have enough substitutes to cover the walkthroughs.
And that's another question, maybe you have to cover classes, a lot of the wire things are current. Alright, thank you.
Steve, you had some questions?
There was a question, I think, sorry, I answered it. I was just curious what the peer involvement, the level of peer involvement of success, if we find with that, I think it would be.
We have two or three teachers that began the coaching model in which they teamed together, just part of the evaluation process, and going into observations during the planning, diet, maybe downtime, they have their lunchtime and shared best practices that way. So, that's natural as well, but it's very time-consuming for the teachers involved in coaching model. But it works.
I heard, um, you mentioned, being your end of the class, you have the announced and the unannounced. And then there's walkthroughs, this is for the thirteen teachers this last year? Or how?
All teachers in my story informally observe on me on a number of occasions. I also go around and look at learning targets and just pop into each classroom. Uh, I try to do it every other, every other week, but it's more like once a month, in which I go into the classrooms with the learning targets, post-learning targets, and put in an email and shoot back to teachers just so they understand. One, that I'm looking at, and the two, we talked about, one of the best ways to write learning targets and affecting student learning through learning targets, so that's where it's at.
Because you mentioned, you know, the amount of documentation that goes into, I guess, the formal and the informal. I'm just wondering, do you feel as an administrator, and if you've heard anything from the other, you know, those administrators, is what this packet, um, it is a lot of documentation, and it's about to take a lot of time. Are there things that you feel could be streamlined in some way to maybe get you in so that you're in that classroom? And all you said.
I think Patty's going to talk about that, sure. But yeah, there is, from the administrative principles point of view, we would like to see it streamlined, have more opportunities to be in the classroom. And in order to do that, it would have to be less written, but what was, as extensive as it is. But we still always want documentation there.
Any other questions? Um, I've just got a couple. Okay, through this process, say, for instance, you end up with a teacher, um, that needs some help in a particular area. Does the district offer adequate support to help that person out in their instruction or in an area that they're, um, could use some help in?
We have lots of teachers where they're doing things effectively, everything's set up for that. For a teacher who is struggling to do an observation, they'd have their teachers to build into their classroom to do observations. I would do more targeted observations. After school, APG times, internal staff development that we can use in order to gain, to gear to a particular weakness that a teacher may have. And Julie and Beth have always been very qualitative, and we ask for additional money to send someone in who would benefit from some sort of professional development outside of district, without them. So, we do have avenues to explore and utilize, willing to do that.
Do you feel you have enough?
We know we have enough. I mean, in a perfect world, there would be someone that come into a classroom and take control of the students and teach you practical lessons while you take that teacher out and, and work with that teacher during the day for a period of time. But that doesn't work that well because of finding quality substitutes, finding a substitute, putting together lesson plans and that sort of stuff. It's very time-consuming to do that. I mean, we need to do that, we do do that, but not, not going to go very well.
And then, you know, there is, this question has been asked by a couple of folks. There's an awful lot of paperwork here, and you've alluded to the fact that, you know, it takes extremely, you know, a large amount of time to do these observations and to get these, you know, um, evaluations in. As a board, this, sort of, this policy goes back two or three years, and it goes back to an interest in the board of having, you know, more accountability within the district. We recognize that, you know, the biggest impact on our students is the contact that they have with teachers. And so, on one hand, we want to make sure that we've got an evaluation process that is in place and working. Two, we want to make sure that, um, the resources are there to support folks if they need help. And I, and, and we're hoping that it creates a culture within the district that isn't about, oh, no, I'm under evaluation again, or geez, is somebody going to come to my classroom, or maybe fear, where it's more about a culture of us working together and identifying where, if there are people that need assistance, that they're getting assistance. So, my question is, all that said, is there any information that the board can get, um, quantitative information that tells the board, this is working or this isn't working?
Alan can answer.
Okay, we need that. We need that information. Because I think we've, we've seen that we have a system in place, we see that we have documentation in place, and we hear anecdotally that it's getting done, but we don't know what, what, we don't know what the outcome is. We don't know, um, you know, what the results of these evaluations are, where our staff stands, how they are relative to other staffs, how they are relative to each other. So, we know the process is being done, we see the documentation, and I think, um, you know, administration has done a great job of making sure that it's happening. And Patrick's done a good job of making sure that everything gets in on time, but we don't, still don't know what the outcome of these evaluations are. We need that information. Thank you. Okay.
I would say, yeah, thanks for your question. It is. It is time to, and our administrators are taking a lot of time in doing a good job. It is, it is time consuming and our administrators are taking a lot of time in doing a good job of getting these in, which is a step that needed to happen when I came on board. Now I think we need to rethink it. Think about a hundred eighty or a hundred seventy-five days, a hundred eighty days. District's made, times five lessons that a teacher teaches, that's over nine hundred lessons that a teacher teaches in a year. And if we're only expecting, just four more write-ups to happen anywhere from three to four times a year, it's really not, it's really not enough. Granted, our principals are in those form to block more. What I'm looking at doing is looking at mini observations starting next year, where a minimum of ten observations would happen for our teachers that are on the phone. It'll be a mini observation, then it'll be a conversation with the teacher about that ten minute mini observation, face-to-face conversation, and then a brief write-up. It would not be trying to take a forty minute lesson, put it into these forms that you have here. I really think that that would make a big difference and go a long ways. You have the forms there, if you look at some of the backup there, we check off what we see in the role, as well as in the summative, we check off either needs improvement or needs expectation. And that's really, when you're talking about growth, that's really not giving a whole lot of information, even though it makes a narrative of what's in front of them. So that's the kind of thing that I'd like to move towards. It would be thirty minutes, some of the most important work we could do. In addition, we should be looking for the same thing in every single classroom. So to keep it simple, we were just talking about this last week at H A T, is using the acronym S O T O. So safety, making sure that people have objectives, the teaching, we're using a lot of different instructional strategies. Engagement, making sure the students are learning, engaged, and the last part is learning, making sure what's being taught is being learned. So this, I mean, that would be a simplistic way to be able to give feedback to teachers. And then at the end of the year, we could fit it into more of a summit of evaluation that we talk about there. I just looked at some data. If you look at Denver, oh five, oh six, to oh seven, oh eight, well, the teachers, they have, they had two thousand three hundred and seventy-five people that were being satisfactory and thirty-two that were being unsatisfactory. In our, you want to take quantitative data, we had anywhere from twenty-five to thirty staff members this year that were checked off, needs improvement in a certain area. So we're looking for trends and patterns to see if those thirty are common across the districts or whether they're not. Or people like mine have to provide professional evidence at their own, at their own school. So I think it's really important, and for me personally, I need to do the same thing with our principal's. Is be in their school floor, be with them, you know, unannounced ten, fifteen times during the year, not following them around, coming over and asking questions about how they're spending their time, student achievement. So it's not just, I expect the principals to do it with teachers, I would be doing that with principals as well. All staff will be guys, ask questions, but I really think we need to rethink and get a better understanding of what's going on in classrooms. And taking away, trying to fit, I mean, I read through every single evaluation. It wasn't fun, but it was very educational. And I have all the files in the office, but I don't get what some principals are doing, going in for forty-five minutes and scripting everything that happens in that classroom and then try to fit that into our tool right now is a more impressive thing, so.
There any questions for Patrick?
Where is student performance coming in?
It hasn't, at this point yet, there isn't something that's at the state level that's, we've talked about, discussed, or who's gonna have it right now, but it's not something that's in our talk yet, in our support.
I mean, I just think that's, that's a certain overlay of whales. Have teachers in the classroom who perform well, who don't perform badly. But the measure, the measure of success that perhaps, I can't speak with the public generally, but the measure of success that people are generally, are typically looking for are student, student, student performance, indicated by metrics of student performance for graduation rates, pass rates on the A P test, college, college acceptance rates, whatever they are. Those, those always come back and color, you know, the results that you might, might show as far as your last observation of teachers, successful teachers. Perception is that a successful teacher is a teacher who's able to get the most out of a teacher or student, students. Hopefully, and I know most of the kinds of metrics that you were talking about.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think for me, again, I just, I want to make sure that we have a process that is effective and that's manageable. Because if it's not, it's going to get neglected. And the other thing is, it has to be a positive thing. We have to create a culture within the schools. And I think student performance may be a part of that, but that's just a part of it. You have to create a culture within the schools where people are supporting each other and we're not afraid to say, you know, we have no trouble saying, you know, you're a great teacher who provided a great education for my kids. At the same time, we have to be able to say honestly, you need help. But not in a pointing finger way and not in a witch hunt way, but in a way to say, we've identified this, we think we can help you out, and not leave people out there hanging for a number of years where they're floundering because they're either not aware of the level of performance or the resources that aren't they at.
And I think this, this way, go, go a long ways developing more trust level in this in all of our schools, which I think exists a lot now, but as far as principals coming to the pressures of law and war and then the purpose of having that basically this discussion within twenty-four hours after you go in for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, is to be able to ask questions, make comments, and be able to hear from the teacher's side. Why, you know, why did that go on that way or why did we introduce it this way? That's more of a conversation piece. Often, we will go in and we will just take notes and then we'll type it up. We'll give it to a, and have a conversation at that point. But there might be things you learn with people that would, you know, change a write-up or affect you. I think that's the professional way of doing that. So I do think that this model would be a positive thing for the district and I think, you know, we, I admit that our system, I think we're, I think we're doing a much better job of making sure that everything's done in the best interest of the communities we're guarding. At this point, I would say no, but I think we're waiting for action to occur.
And I think the last piece of that is, as I said before, and maybe I wasn't clear, we just got all these forms. This is the first time we're seeing these forms and, you know, we haven't had a chance to digest it. There has to be, as part of this process, a way at the end of the year or halfway through the year that the administration is able to report back to the board in a clear way that says how we're doing, how the process is doing, is it effective, and what are the results? Because if we can identify within those results, areas where we need help, it allows us to better able to make that a priority in terms of budget, funding, and programming for the next year.
And so.
Yeah, what can we do to help? But we, we don't know that unless we see some sort of a summary that says, okay, at the end of this school year, you know, we had X amount of teachers who were satisfactory, X amount that were unsatisfactory, then we identified out of those teachers that were unsatisfactory, here's a specific area where we see some deficiencies. And if we had this in place, then we could, you know, we could see big improvements. So that's, that's. Any other questions or comments for Patrick?
Just, I'm encouraged, it's obvious that our goals are taken very seriously and there's a lot of hard work going on to affect a good evaluation system. The feedback is important.
Yeah. And it will change. I mean, it's going to change over time. As we do it, we realize what we're doing well and not well, we need to be open to changing, and I think that's fine. So, all right, well. Bud, thank you, bud.
All right, we will now move on to item seven point two, presentation by Dave Richards. Are you going to need to run the machine?
Just like that.
Okay, so you'll be able to speak.
I can.
All right, good.
Okay, there it goes. My mic's very loud, so. All right, so I was tasked by the Facilities Committee and Finance Committee, we had a joint meeting a while back ago, to come up with a five-year assessment for the facilities to also coincide with the air and report. My objectives were assess the building's needs for five, before repairs for five years, develop a cost for building, provide a timeline for the project, and present an overview for options to include hearing report. We'll start with math, maybe. First thing I discovered was repiping the boiler, piping, remove the old steam header. As you see, I've got a pointer of that. All the white stuff up there, that's called the steam header. And we have a hot water system. So what you do, you get really bad flow, which results into cracking sections, which we replaced. That's a fix for that. This year we replaced three sections and repaired two sections on the boiler on the left. Last year we replaced eight sections to that boiler. That's an eighteen section boiler. So what you're looking at is, in the red, is you come off the front of the boiler into a mixing valve and then up to the main header, you gear it up, all that steam header in front. The problem is what we have is flow. Also down there where it says pump, that's a blend pump. What that does is takes the hot water off the boiler and mixes it into the return water so you don't shock your boiler. So that's what we've been doing all these years, shocking the boiler on your return water. And that's where cracks your sections. It was porridge in when they did it back in two thousand. They switched the building from steam to hot water, but they just kept the steam header. It's not that it can't be done, it's just not done efficiently and damages the boiler, especially on Smiths. Smiths are notorious for this type of damage if you keep it on the steam header. We have the same situation at Fisher Mitchell, over there in half buildings, steam, half buildings hot water, so you don't have a choice. We had it in Houston too. All right, also installed variable frequency drives, B F Ds, on circulator pumps. We have two five-door circulator pumps running at full power all the time. Very good speed drives, what they do is they, they work off outside air sensors so that it'll speed up and slow down based on demand, so you save a lot of energy. Payback on those is about a year by putting on frequency drives. You get a fifteen hundred dollar per motor rebate from efficiency bay. Total cost for those is right around nine, I got a dollar cost for them. Redesigned the front entrances with secure entrances. None of our buildings are secure. Anybody, anybody pretty much walk right in. Secretary happens to see me, that's great. So you redesign the front of buildings, basically like Woolworths has, where you buzz in so they can see you coming. Other items to include, paving driveway in front and back of the school, new roof with a gym, one hundred, two hundred, three hundred wings, desperately need it. Flooring for twelve rooms, we've still got nineteen eighty carpet. Low-flow bathroom fixtures installed with one hundred, two hundred, three hundred wing. We still have regular flow toilets. Furniture for ten classrooms, and I've upgraded furniture since two thousand and seven, somewhere. And we did five classrooms for the last round. Basically took the old furniture out of the rooms, we swapped that stuff, put in another one. Furniture doesn't last forever. Estimated cost for B M S, repiping and removing the steam header, thirty-two thousand. Blend pump, sixteen thousand. B F drive, nine thousand. Secure entrance, thirty-five thousand. Paving, eighty-five, we're leaving, right on that. Total estimated cost, five hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, B M S. Next one is Fisher Mitchell. Heating plant replacement. As you can see, there's another steam header, I'll give you an example, all that white section. Heating plant controls, there is no controls over there. It's just thermostats and glass tubes. You have no computer controls, no modulation and nothing. Domestic hot water replacement. You can't really see it very clearly, but there's a little gold thing down at the bottom. That hot water heater is twenty-four years old. It's a gas fire, it's a oil-fired hot water heater. And it's attached to a giant tank next to it. And then convert the school to natural gas. If you were going to do that, you'd put in a burn control on the front of that. And convert the domestic hot water over to natural gas. Plate guard drainage, it all needs to be redone. It turns into a swamp over there where every rain is. Other items included, roof of the nineteen fifty-three section, that's the original section of the building. That's called a Bailey building. They built it after the Second World War. They were designed to last twenty years to handle a big one. We're a little past twenty years. Windows in the nineteen seventy-eight wing, they're nineteen seventy-eight windows. Secure front entrance, bathroom over halls, gang bathrooms in fifty-three century. Exit doors in the fifty-three wings, just about every door there has a exit door in the classroom, most of them are as built. Convert kitchen to gas, pavement behind the, behind the school and the pavement all the way around the school. Flooring main hall plus ten classrooms, furniture times ten classrooms. Fisher Mitchell's estimated cost, heating plant replacement, hot water, gas, controls, domestic air exchange through incident, five thousand, roof eighty-two, windows forty-two, bathrooms, kitchen on down to the bottom, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. Natural distribution as well, gets more and more, classrooms with one or two receptacles. Dyke Knoll School, who's my favorite. Replace the heating plant. That is a Cleaver Brooks thirty-pound pressure boiler. Real cute, slim, but it's also put in in nineteen eighty. So that's just about at the end of its life. It's been re-tuned a couple of times. If you don't do that so many times, you re-tune them. Install heating controls, replace all heating piping. Heating piping is horrendous. This year we had to dig it up on that. Last year was the other way. This year it'll probably be everything in the litter. Just keeps, bury pipes. It don't last forever. Who would have known? Replace the domestic hot water. That thing's a nightmare right there. That's the hot water tank down there. It's controlled by steam. Steam comes in, heats up the water, and then the domestic hot water goes out. You don't dare poke with a stick, I'm telling you. It's that scary. But it still works. Replace the windows, walls in sixty-three wing. Replace roof in sixty-three wing. Economically, it's probably cheaper to replace the sixty-three wing. And keep the cafeteria, just replace everything with that sawtooth roof. Because what happens in the winter is that, as a two-foot overhead, the ends freeze up and you get about twenty to forty gallons of water frozen up in the hill and it starts leaking in. So you have to go up there on the wall and bust out the ends to get all the water off. Russ's favorite thing to do. Other items include abating sixty-three wings, piping exterior walls. All those exterior walls have discussed the sheeting on the outside. So you have to abate everything, replace the windows, to replace the walls, to replace the roofs. Everything that's left is pretty much the floor, which you've got to dig up because all the piping's in the floor, which is consistently leaking. Electrical upgrades, there's not much power in those classrooms. Bathrooms upgrades, A D A. If you've ever been into cafeteria and walked under those bathrooms, look how narrow it is to get into those stalls. It's pretty funny. Paving in that lot, that's completely gone just about. Kitchen overhaul, furniture fifteen rooms, secure front entrance. Here's your cost, heating plant, seventy-twenty, domestic hot water to forty. Roof, walls, windows, one point two. Abating, one eighty. Electrical, one oh one, one hundred and ten. Grand total of Dyke Knoll, like I said, that you could replace this three wing, two million seven hundred eighty-six thousand. That's that. Heating plant control systems, air exchange systems. What you're looking at is nineteen fifty-six, powers control. All the matics runs on the air. All the matics runs on the air. First thing when William met me, "I gotta show you Les Bath, show you these great boilers I put in." I looked at him, nice and beautiful, baderas boilers, and turned around and I saw that. I said, "So, is it hitched up to this still?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "Well, nice boilers, buddy. It's nice to have something to operate with." So you want to update the air exchange system? You know really much of the air exchange, other than the windows. You got one unit on the roof, it does too much for the roof. Other items included: exterior drainage. It's similar to how the water drains into the building, doesn't pitch away from the building. I know they made an attempt at this a bunch of years ago with some sort of drainage with rocks on top of it. But it needs to be pitched away better. Secure front entrance, paving. Roof restoration, that's on, well, I have a chart of this. One, $180, and two. That's basically reseating the roof. That's that, roof's a bit of a shaker there. Flooring in main rooms, again, you got 1980 carpet and furniture in rooms. Les Bath estimates, $320,000, air exchange, heating controls, nine years of paving, $36,000, $42,000, $48,000. For grand total, $674,000. Pittsburgh, this school here, heating plant overhaul. Again, you're looking at two little Smith boilers. Those two little boilers right there, excuse me. I think I have to heat the whole school. Instead, you have those two, plus four hot air furnaces. They got each one to each own house in various locations in the building. You repipe the school so you run off of these two boilers. And get rid of those other ones that are in the classroom. Again, when I first got here, they were hinged up to any safeties. So the fuel pumped from the tank all the way through the building and all the way back to the boiler. If it ever broke inside the building, you'd have to repump the tank dry. Now there's these safeties in there, so senses the drop in pressure, it shuts it all off. It was pretty scary when I first discovered that. Heating plant control, same thing. We need some sort of control system to regulate the heating rooms. Some air exchange, as you can see in the air, it's quite hot. The air chamber is nice. Septic Leach Field right out here, which is just behind that, a giant pond. That is just about at the end of its life for the size of this building. The only other location you're probably gonna be able to get away with is the DEP, the ball field. Which means you have to put a pumping station to get to the ball field. Which, of course, the well's on that side, so you have to move the well to this side. Because you can't have Leach Field downhill, you can't have a well downhill from your well. So, other items to include: paved all areas of pavement. Flooring in main rooms, kitchen upgrade, and you see these kitchens, ridiculous. Secure front entrance and furniture in five rooms. Pittsburgh estimated cost, heating cost, air exchange, $20, subject to $10, wealth, $30, heating areas, $72, so on and so forth. $792,000. Summary, energy costs for each building. Total, $5,631,000. Recommended, 6% occupancy, for total of $5,990,060. This doesn't include any technology upgrades or anything like that, this is strictly facility. Timelines. Hire a third-party consultant to review the project and create a big package. Present the project to the school board for review. Public meetings for projects. Ball cost breakdowns for referendum vote. First phase of project, July 2014. That's impressive. Harriman report. Prepare all repair options for the Harriman report with overview needs for the district. Comprise and develop most cost-effective options for option one. Make sure all, the overall options chosen will provide the best environment for the health, safety, and learning for the next 15 years. And that's it. Questions?
Are there any questions for Dave? This is gonna bring us into our next discussion, financing facilities. If you could stick around and be available.
I'll hold my mic.
If you could, that'd be great. Alright, thank you for the presentation. Could I follow your board? Yeah, the one thing I would like, if you could, if you could send the board a copy of the summary and that timeline, that'd be great.
All you know is the full presentation, all.
Alright, so that presentation brings us into committee reports. We had two committee reports, 8.1 is facilities, 8.2 is finance. Since those committees met jointly the last time, I'm gonna turn this over to Steve and Bill. But that said, I wanna then follow up with the discussion kind of hinges on the Harriman report and where we go next. Can I ask some suggestions? I'll let them present what went on at the last meeting. So, do you two wanna take it?
Mr. Chairman, we came over to the Finance Committee. You were present, very good turnout from the board. And the Facilities Committee brought over essentially the discussions that they had around both of the Harriman reports. First, the one which Dave has just gone into detail on relative to the four older elementary schools. There was no final recommendation. Certainly, it's tremendously premature to talk about options, which are also included in the Harriman report, and include the consolidation of the schools, the building of the new consolidated school, the closing of various schools. Honestly, we read them, we digested them, we came back and talked about them. But it's very obvious that at this point in time, we've gotta bring what we've got up to standard so that our kids are well taken care of over a five-year period and probably well into another decade. Because we're not gonna be gifted with a great deal of funding and resources where it normally used to come from, from the state. That's kind of over. So, we want to remediate the immediate needs. And in order to do that, Dave, I saw your list. It's impressive as heck and it's scary as heck. But at some point in time, I think Finance would agree we're gonna have to prioritize what it is we have to do over the shot law and what needs to be addressed over a longer period of time. It's an awful big budget at one time. We need to monitor trends, particularly enrollment trends as it relates to those newer schools. They seem to have stabilized over the period of time that I've been here. At least in this particular building, there's a glimmer of hope in terms of increased enrollment. There's talk of a large group of kindergarten kids coming in and pre-K kids coming in, which may stabilize here, which had been a real downward slide. So, all of those factors are gonna have to be taken into consideration. But the buildings, from a facilities perspective, unless maybe Alan has a different perspective, need to be maintained for the time being and brought up to a reasonable standard so that we're sure the kids are in safe and secure facilities while we plan for the future. And I listed security systems, Dave had security systems, listed on each of his lists. It was, as you know, it was a major thing for me back in college time. And I wish we'd done what we've done. Bringing, it looked like we might get a grant, and the grant didn't come through. We're gonna have to pay for it, because you've gotta make sure that our elementary schools, not all of our schools, but especially our elementary schools are secure. So that for the safety of students and staff in light of the world we're looking at at this point in time. Did you want to go with Morse? Dave, did you go with Morse?
I don't think, not yet.
No idea.
Dave, do you wanna take over?
Dave, you want to go with that?
I'd not go with Morse. The only thing I would, one thing I would, I thought it was a very productive meeting. It's something we'd like to, activity we'd like to continue through the summer. Bill reminds me that he comes back to you to, to call us together again in summer, if we, if you have a good first semester. The other, the other thing that I think we were particularly sensitive to is process. And I think it's important, certainly the factual information that Dave presented is important in the first place. And it seems to create a compelling narrative to go forward. But we have to bring the community into the process early and keep the community engaged as the board works through this decision. And whether that's done by sending out another call to expand existing facilities. We have community members on both committees. So I'll go whether we open it up, try to get more community involved in facilities and in finance, or whether we decide to create or panel something to look at in specific, you know, these specific recommendations. But there's no recommendations. Specifics have a fact, hopeful recommendations will come back to the board. But, but I think we're all on for it. And for the board to move through this process without community engagement. It was just not gonna be, it's not gonna be a damn successful. And you want this to end successfully. Whether it be, whether a recommendation go forward, it could fall, it could be a long recommended, or voters, or some other option. Community participation is a good idea. Finance, we'll look at the timeline and do things. If we're able to come up with some reasonable dollar targets we can compare, we'll pay the dollar initiative. The recommend, the dollar initiative. Hopefully, hopefully, we can remember. So that we don't incur additional costs for, for, for these terms of production. But we're, we're ways from that. We have to start working on the initiative.
Okay, so this is what I wanna do. It's six minutes after seven right now. We've heard for facilities, we've heard for finance. We need to make a decision tonight about how we're going to proceed forward. We've had the two reports done. We've had the Harriman report done on the elementary schools, and that was mostly looking at capacity. And I think we've had the Harriman report done on Morse. And that one had a price tag attached to it, and I don't have it in front of me. I wanna say it was 4.7. 4.7 million. So, it's a little bit eye-opening what Dave has presented to us tonight. I think we need to form a subcommittee that's made up of folks within the community and board members and get a recommendation back to this board by September about if we're gonna look at bonding somebody, what it is that we're gonna cover, like Bill said, prioritize. And what do you think the community can stomach? What can the district handle? And what comes first and what comes second? This presentation on the elementary schools is a little overwhelming. I thought we had Morse on the table, and now we're looking at some other significant increases. And I think that's not something that we're gonna do battle on or sort out tonight. So, I think what I need to hear from the board on is how do we proceed forward? I want a recommendation back to this board by September, by the September board meeting. Do we go in two different directions? Do we have one subcommittee work on elementary schools and another work on Morse? Do we have that as committees who work together? Who makes up those committees? That's what I wanna get from the board tonight. Because then I'm gonna charge Patrick to hit the ground running so that these committees, subcommittees can need to give us a clear direction going forward. Because we continue to get overwhelmed by this information every year, and then it just laddies. So, that said, I'm gonna turn it over to you folks. But to keep the discussion lively, please have the questions go through with the chair. So, is there anybody who would like to ask a question or comments about this? Steve?
I, I would recommend that we impale two separate committees. One look at Morse, one look at the elementary school. That we expand participation in young, current finance and the Facilities Committee, all of those members should certainly be involved, who needs some expertise from the community and have a broader representation of the community in this country.
Okay, so let's begin with that. Does it make sense for us to have two separate subcommittees? Or to have one single subcommittee? With regard to looking at funding, immediate needs, monies that would be bonded in November? Alan?
I think you could start off with two separate committees, but at some point, you've got to marry together for that final figure. Unless you're gonna have two bond issues on the same election, which doesn't make it awful long a sentence. And I'm willing to work through the summer to do some of the groundwork.
Thoughts on that?
I agree with you.
Kyle?
I think Alan, I mean, when you get right down to it, I don't think some, but money is money. And in the end, that's what you're going to need to get any part or whole. And somebody has to make some decisions about prioritizing things. And I think that's best done by a single group, they can track it out.
Any thoughts on that?
I'd say the only issue with one is the timeline. You could group, play a complex, two compositions, plus a tablet. You better sure to have two different groups, or three. So that we cover all bases. You had two years of use, a big one for you. You did too, by the way, to live, but not that, really not that much.
Any other thoughts?
I'd still agree with Alan, to start out with two committees. Because, in my mind, this was overwhelming. And then thinking about Morse, which one building was almost as much as that. I think it's initially separating the two because they were such huge, well, to me, they're huge amounts, maybe some people, they're not huge amounts, but, and the needs. But they do need to come together at some point to come up with something. These are our priorities for middle school and the elementary schools. These are our priorities for the high school. And how do we go put that together? So I think to start separately and then come together, like Alan said, in my mind, makes no sense. And I'd be more than happy if I had a bunch of second.
Any other thoughts? Bill?
Well, we're looking essentially at maintaining facilities, finance, but determining action on that level. Pulling together two separate subcommittees, one dealing with the secondary school and the other dealing with the middle school and the elementary schools. And invite community participation in both of those subcommittees. We already have some great community participation on our committees. Very talented people that bring some real skills to the committees. But at this point, we'd love to have, I think, and we should have, more community input on both sides, on both the elementary middle and on the Morse side. And the Morse side, you and I have discussed it, just offhand, but we definitely need, on the Morse side, we need alumni, we need community leaders, we need business leaders from the community since the skill's being learned, what they're asking for, and general community members, parents, and everyone else. The Morse piece needs to be all encompassing. And we need support and advocacy from a whole different group of people. The bones and flesh and bones of the elementary and middle school issue is primarily a fiscal issue and various components that need to be addressed. The Morse issue, we know that from what we've heard out of Augusta that we're talking about at least a decade before we're going to get major financial assistance from the state. And during that time, first of all, we need to address current needs, but we also need community support, transformational flow, what it is that we'd like to see, either a replacement or rebuilding of the existing facility, because now in 1928, it's not going to go much longer.
Yeah. I think, okay, with regard to two committees or one committee, my thought on this is I feel that we should have one committee. I think the benefit of one committee is that we are going to be drawing from a single pool. And we don't want to have, I don't want to get into a situation where these two committees end up coming together and either battle it out, or you have one committee that's very strong and has a lot of impact with the public, and maybe the other committee is not as strong, and so one committee overshadows the other, and it ends up, you know, impacting how it affects our facility in one way or the other. It isn't, it isn't balanced. And I think, given the amount of work that needs to happen, we need to look at this comprehensively. I wish we had the time to look at it individually, but I don't see us having the time to do that. I think we kind of have to identify what we could bond and what we can afford to fix, and look at it cross-district. So my vote is for one committee.
That's facilities, finance combined. That's where that can be addressed, and addressed efficiently with quality people.
Well, I think you can, I think you can do it with one committee, certainly. If the charge for the committee is clear. Again, the reason I would suggest it too is you don't want the Morse issue to bury the elementary schools, or vice versa, you know, the elementary school burying the Morse issue. But with a sufficiently strong charge from the board, that the committee is tasked to look at both sets of concerns and come back with two clear, balanced recommendations. You could probably do, you could probably, I understand what you mean. There's a discrete talent pool out there, you want folks involved who understand finance and some expertise and skills that you don't necessarily have on the board to try to, you know, spread that to two committees, like I mentioned, the pool. But if it is going to be one committee, and, you know, they have to be tasked clearly with what our expectations are, trying to develop what separate evaluation.
Yeah, that's a good point. Do you think, I mean, can we come up with that task right now?
Well, I think, I think we did, and I think we've been pretty clear.
So can you articulate that?
Well, first, some people have expressed, you know, an interest in two committees, but if we, if it comes down to a single committee, that, you know, the board move forward and seek additional community input, participation on a subcommittee to look at district-wide facility, including elementary, elementary schools, middle school, and Morse. Working with Dave and the board, and the financing facilities community, that there's certainly that be responsible for making recommendations to the full board in September.
No, that would give those recommendations up to the public, and at that point, we might want to conduct a public hearing and invite the public to respond and to talk about the various recommendations which the combined committee was trying to court.
So let's, let's back it up a little bit. Let's back it up a little bit. Is there, are we, what is the feeling, one committee, two committees? Just go around.
I think probably it could be one.
Robin?
Phil?
Kyle?
I think it would be, we have really fine expectations, more of a partnership.
Steve? One. Dave?
One.
Phil?
I do think that there's room for a long-term planning committee around the issue of Morse.
I agree with you. I think that will come out of this process.
We need, it should.
And I think had you not seen this presentation, we might have looked at things a little differently. But I think unfortunately, we need to throw this into the same basket as Morse, at least for short term.
For short term, without a question.
Also, the long-term, the long-term issue can be, some of the options I would do to work on. Some of these things need to be done now, but certainly be looking at.
And that's the hard thing, because again, we have some short-term needs that we need to address, either things that have been neglected or things that need to get addressed immediately with both elementary schools and with Morse. But then we have a long-term discussion, which is sort of with the Harbin report, you know, some level of consolidation or shifting around at the elementary level, and the long-term discussion about Morse, you know, what are we going to do with that facility? My fear is, I don't want this subcommittee to get bogged down in those discussions because it's just going to prolong the need to get something done to take care of some of the immediate needs. So maybe out of that, out of this committee, we form two that work on the long-term picture. And what they come back to us and recommend may not be everything that Dave just, you know, put this list. I hope that isn't the case. I mean, I hope that is the case, that they, they don't give us full shopping. But.
But that is to another point, actually. You want to place some arbitrary limit on the amount of the bonded funding that you're looking to, instead of giving simple cart wash to the committee, arbitrary number, ten million or something, and say, meet the prioritization requirements, and whatever is left, use to meet other other things that need to be done, instead of making total open end.
Right. I mean, perhaps that could be a charge for the finance committee to look at the implications of 2 million, 4 million, 8 million, 15 million, what it's going to do to our budget, what it's going to do to our debt ratio. Yeah, all of that stuff, so that we can get, if the finance committee is working on coming up with a number, and the facilities or this other subcommittee is working on addressing the problems, maybe they'll kind of meet in the middle, and the subcommittee will say, we need 10, and finance will say, well, you can only have eight, and we kind of narrow that down. I think that's something that, it's a good point. I mean, that's something that finance can be working on now, as the subcommittee is just looking at this host of issues that we need to deal with. So I would say, you know, how large a committee are we talking about? I mean, we want to have community, we need to have board participation, we need to have Dave Richards on it, we need to have alumni on it, we should probably have some selectmen or city council members on it. What's going to be large enough that it's inclusive, but not so large that it's not manageable?
Again, you can pick an arbitrary number, I mean.
We got to, we got to pick one.
Pick a number, no.
Nine, nine members.
Eight, yeah, which is good. I think we have eight now.
But again, we.
Two existing players, we have eight. So in order to, to, to more participation, we have to go beyond that. Ten or twelve.
These are the highest disease. So let's begin.
There's eight members, and we continue down. That will have to apply for whether it be, you know, alumni, some, you know, there's like engineering, you know, building type of people that get this stuff, that Dave should say, you know, please, they don't get it. You know, help me shoot the big picture kind of thing, I don't know. Those folks are even around available, but that would be a little bit more so that nobody can say, you know, they were being left out, or excluded, or something like that. You know, that's about five more.
Well, for the practice standpoint, trying to put thirteen people in a room, say for a summertime meeting, more than once or twice over a two-month period, that's a different problem, really.
Right, to find dates, they work for everyone. Do we necessarily need all members of facilities and all members of finance to be on?
I think, especially if you're going to charge finance separately, you know, to do some research on the following numbers, there may be some items like that that come up upon that facilities also. They make sense. Not just, maybe some separate work that will be kind of charged to those committees to do, which is the finance.
So what if, Patrick, if you could pull together a subcommittee of nine to thirteen people who are willing to be between now and the September board meeting, at least, I don't know, half a dozen times? And if you could articulate what it was you said to be, I started to take some notes, but I kind of got, well, I'm not a fast writer. I mean, really, the charge is to sort of prioritize those things for the elementary and for Morse, and, you know, they'll work on a number, finance will work on a number, but not get bogged down with what are we going to do with the elementary schools, what are we going to do with Morse long-term? Do you think that's feasible? Okay, does that make sense?
I'd actually, Morse long-term, I think, is separate committee.
Yeah, we'll come out of that.
We'll spin out of whatever we determine we're going to do with the short term.
And maybe one meeting of this subcommittee, they say, look, okay, for one meeting, for X amount of time, we will talk about long-term, but then let's focus on short-term. Does that make sense?
And we've got some great folks, like Alan, as I said before, we've got the electrical engineer on the facilities, we've got a building specialist on facilities, he's got a financial expert, the financial, he's a very good. Add to, let's not lose any of the quality that we've got.
Okay.
But all of our meetings are open to the public, right? So if we don't have everybody from both committees there, they're free to come. You know, I see the feeling committed that they've got to be in every meeting. I would hope that we would get a small group from both sides that will be there at every meeting, but the others feel free that they can come when available.
Ready to go?
I would just reiterate, if this is, as this is reported, that the board is committed to community input and involvement going forward. And I think it's a question of, after September, would we do a public, definitely.
Right, definitely.
Part of the process, it is part of the process. There's no effort here to present with the public, you know, the proposal that everyone hasn't had an opportunity to understand, but.
And that's a good point, but to be clear, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, it's been common practice that when a subcommittee like that reports back and we're talking about a big item like this, there's at least three public workshops that we would have following that to say, here's what we came up with, folks, what do you think? Does it work?
Perfect, that's definitely what we need to do.
Yeah. Anything you wanted to add on that, Patrick? Okay.
You'll get home by November 11, while we're, between nine and 13.
Yeah, between nine and 13, make it an odd number. All right, let's move on to superintendent's report.
I'll go through some items quickly. It's first, I just wanted to introduce Sandra, I'll see if I can get this right, Horace Chalmers, is our new principal here at Pittsburgh, and very pleased, I also want to get her through the process, and she decided to come here and like to summer with me to be helped, so welcome.
I'm thinking the mics aren't on.
Dana, Dana Waring, who works at Harvard University in the Department of Genetics, recently gave Bath Middle School some high praise. A couple of weeks ago, Dana went into Ms. Galasso's seminary class to introduce bioethics. She then returned to hear student presentations, and they were done in a Socratic seminar where students were making their presentations, sharing research, and then open to each other's ideas. And she was very, giving some very high praise to the critical thinking that was going on in that classroom, and even asked if Ms. Galasso, as well as the Purple House, would make a presentation at a conference in the fall. So I just wanted to thank Dana for coming to Bath Middle School, as well as Jenny Galasso and the Purple House for all that they do. Authorities, we had quite a few at the elementary level where students are presenting their writing to adults, and I was fortunate to go to a couple of those. We have some summer reading efforts, one here at Pittsburgh, but also at Dighton, where we're buying books for students, and also providing incentives for students to read summertime. Middle School Track, Bath Middle School, and Volvish Together, RSH One Track, first place in all of their meets this year, and went undefeated. And West Bath Celebration of Learning, I think that happened three weeks ago, and just a wonderful afternoon of students sharing their work. Morse varsity baseball team, once again, made it to the Western Maine Finals. Unfortunately, once again, lost to Falmouth, but a very successful season. And then Steve, I don't know if you want to comment, but hopefully I get this right, is that thanking Julie Kenny from the ERC2C, our students, for making a logo, I think, for the triathlon at the YMC.
It was a great logo, and the kids did a great job.
Okay. We'll move on to the financial report. Ruth?
Well, certainly getting down to the end, I have not only May, but I'm working on June too, since June is nearly done. The one thing that has changed from May, where it looks like we're going along as we have predicted, in June, the state looked at some of the main care billing that they had previously done for us and have come back with numerous credits, unexplained at this point. So instead of the third quarter being what the projection was, I think it was 90-something thousand, they are taking 15,000 from us. So the number on here will change by, for main care, will change by, what is it, 75,000 to the good. However, we did pick up a couple of tuitions towards the end of this year, the last couple of months, so that ate into that savings a little bit. Right now, it looks like June, if things come in, and it should be a couple more weeks that I'll wait for bills to come in, but we should be around the $200,000 mark with care for caring. mark with care, for caring over.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ruth? All right, thank you, Ruth.
I'll just take a minute and thank the, the administrators and the staff in general, because this year we put the freeze on very early because of the main care issue and some other items, and it hasn't been an easy year, it's probably been one of the more stressful years, um, when it comes to money, and if you look at a twenty-six million dollar budget and only having about two-hundred thousand, uh, left over, that's not what we want to be, but at the same time, if you look at it as a positive thing, uh, we know a lot of challenges this year, and, and so my credit and kudos to the business department.
Okay. We'll move on to item ten point O, old business. Uh, we have a number of second readings here. Uh, we begin, these are policy readings, we'll begin with ten point one, second reading of policy JJIAB, extracurricular activity participation regulation. This is an action item, is there a motion? Move to group by Bill, second by Steve. Any questions, comments, issues, changes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to accept, raise your hand. Opposed, none, that passes. Uh, next policy is item ten point two, second reading of policy JJIF, management of concussions and other head injuries. Uh, again, an action item, is there a motion?
No.
Move to approve, approved by Alan, second by Dave. Any further discussion, changes? All those in favor of the motion to approve? None opposed, that passes. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item ten point three, second reading of policy JHB, truancy policy, uh, truancy, again, an action item, is there a motion? Move to pass by Dave, seconded by Steve. Any questions, comments, changes? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Any opposed? That passes. Okay, item ten point four, second reading of policy JKAA, JKAA dash R, use of physical restraint and suppression. Is there a motion? Move to approve by Bill?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay, and finally, uh, item ten point five, second reading of policy GBEF, um, personal and district issued personal electronic devices. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Kyle, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, I think at this point, I'm going to table our review of board goals. We will move on to item eleven point O, uh, new business. We'll begin with eleven point one, personnel items. You received an email, we have an art copy here in front of you, of, um, some new positions. I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Yeah, we have four nominations for you this evening, you can see them in the back up, I'll just go through them, I don't want to take it as a full group or individually, uh, but nominating Amanda Nalls as a new guidance counselor at Morris, Kelsey Marco as a grade two teacher at West Bath, Kathleen Rockin as a pre-K teacher at Pittsburgh, and Jen Fevens as a fifth grade teacher at Woolwich. Jen, as you may recall, Jen was a teacher here, and then was transferred to Fisher Mitchell to become a reduction of force here, and she applied for the Woolwich position, so she's got to move it around. So those are the four this evening.
Okay, um.
I would move acceptance of all four.
Okay, there's a motion by Alan, that we accept him as a group, seconded by Robin. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve all four positions, raise your hand. None opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, I'll turn this over to Patrick, there's a couple more items, personnel items.
Just two resignations, as FYI, is Megan Phillips, grade five teacher at West Bath, and Mark Carrigan, guidance counselor at Morris, and I'd like to make a vote for their years of service to RSU One.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to item eleven point two, approve transportation contract. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, she's her second, seconded by Alan. Any discussion on this? Patrick, can you just refresh us, um, how this contract compares to what we paid last year?
Yeah, by law, we have to, a transportation contract come to you for approval, and I can give you some idea, Ruthie can chime in as well, but the difference for the first year is a four point one-nine percent increase, for the second year it's a five point three-zero increase, and for year three it's a two percent, two point oh-one percent increase. We went out to bid, Bath Bus Service was the only bid that came in, and we worked with them, since the time they submitted their bid, we've had a great relationship with them, with the service they provide our students and families.
And there are any questions for Patrick on this contract?
It says, it says that we, the RSU pays for the fuel, we pay, how, how is that?
I'll let Ruthie answer that question, she has more experience in that.
We purchase the fuel, they bill us for the fuel, we purchase it, you know, they obviously get it at their station, and bill us on a monthly basis, but it's not part of the contract. We looked at.
So we don't negotiate the fuel price?
No, no, um. To, to put that out to bid, um, I don't know, I don't know if there's another entity in the area that would be able to provide that as conveniently as, as, uh, Berks can, and, um, we get the, uh, the taxes back from the state, I apply for those to come back. We used to, when we were the Bath School Department, we used to, uh, purchase it through the Bath Public Works, because they would put it out to bid, but they have storage facility for that. However, um, they tack on a fifty, well, it was a couple of years ago when I worked there, a fifty cent gallon, per gallon, uh, cost onto their bid price, because they have to maintain their tank and replace it every now and then, so, uh, that puts that, adding that fifty cents per gallon puts it higher than what Bath Bus Service can purchase it. So I think that we're probably better off purchasing it through them.
Any other questions for Ruthie on that? I think Steve, you bring up a good point, you know, under this contract, it says, and we had this contract, I've worked on negotiating this contract a few years ago, but it just says it should be noted as agreed that fuel for all facilities for RSU One will be paid for by RSU One. Doesn't necessarily stipulate where the fuel comes from, it doesn't put any kind of a limit on what they can charge, I don't know how we could, as a district, you know, sort of protect ourselves, or at least have some fair language in there that, um, you know, offers the districts some, some level of protection. I mean, it's been a good relationship up until now, and I expect it to continue, but there's no real language there that stipulates, um, what they can charge, or where they get the fuel from.
Well, you would think, you would think that, you know, if, if they were bidding this out, if you were bidding fuel out separately, there'd be a speed rate of some kind, and you don't, you don't know whether they're charging us pump, you know, what, you would either pay pump, or, or are they charging us some sort of discounted rate because of the, 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 the pump? Maybe at this point, I don't know, this, this, we weren't approving it, but the contract has issued, right?
Yeah, I mean, by law, I'd have to approve.
By law, I don't know.
That's the point, I'm saying, by law, that's what we're doing.
No, no, I know, but I mean.
I would, I would say that, I mean, that's a good question, but I also would say, we spent a fair amount of time talking to municipal management, reaching out to all the systems because I wasn't comfortable with a prior contract, there's some of the language in it, and some of the, yeah, some of the warranty, so we did take our time on this one, and received, again, like I said, received that one bid back from Bath Bus Service, so, you know, but I, I made a note in the future, um, you know, looking at gas, you know, we want to, you know, look at that differently in the future, but.
Maybe they, maybe they would stipulate it's tied to, you know, some standard number that's printed in the newspaper, or printed in the Wall Street Journal, or you can, you're going to pay X above, or, um, that language would be helpful.
It would, I mean, if a local vendor service, well, you know, great deal of confidence in that vendor, uh, I wouldn't want us to slow down the process tonight, but I really do think, Steve, that it needs to be in the document, the contracts are three-year contracts, isn't it?
Yeah.
Would it be open to amend that next year?
I mean, I think, I think we might have talked about that if we approved it tonight, so.
Yeah.
I think that's a conversation, so it must be added, so we can try to do that.
If we're not asking them to do anything, do we have to do that?
Just, just to give us our level of expectation, yeah? And it might also help us manage our costs. So could we perhaps amend the motion on the floor that we're conditionally approving this, as long as we get some sort of language or some sort of feedback from Bath Service about what the fuel charge is, or how that's determined? There is a motion to approve, Dave? Robin made the motion, now a second.
You wanted to make the motion to amend?
I'm suggesting the amendment, would you approve that?
Yes.
I'm gonna amend. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the contract, uh, conditionally, uh, that we receive some language or some feedback from Bath Bus Service about how the fuel price is generated. Makes sense? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That passes. Okay, um. We have policies for first reading. Oh, excuse me, thank you. Item eleven point three, approve copier printer contract for the year. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Seconded by Dave, seconded by Bill. Okay, any discussion? Ruth, would you be willing to talk a little bit about this contract?
This is a contract through a company called, um, SPC, Specialized Purchasing Consultants, um, who specializes in copiers and printers, and, uh, Bath before we became an RSU, Bath, I had Bath, um, look at, take this company, I don't know if any of you recognize the name, it's Skip Tilton, he's been in the business for many years, um, I had him come in and look at the Bath School Department's system because it was so haphazard, we, we owned copiers, leased copiers, and they were from numerous vendors, numerous, um, maintenance contracts on them, and Skip brought it all together under, um, under one umbrella of, and maybe at the most, three vendors, but we're down to, um, with this one, having just, uh, basically one vendor. What this company does is goes through your school, talks to the personnel, looks at maps where all of your copiers and printers are, determines your needs, presents it, presents it to you to see if you agree, and, um, Dean Anderson and I have looked at these and made sure that what they're presenting is, is what our need is, and then he puts it out to bid to numerous companies that want business. In this case, a company that we're currently doing business with, um, budget business, budget, uh, technologies, um, won the bid, they are currently maintaining a lot of our network printers and, and the other printers in the school, um, but they also handle the same copiers that we have. Generally, you have a, it's a five-year lease, um, you can go out to bid at any time during that time, because he's, he's constantly doing, going out to bid two, three times a year for various school departments, he usually gets, he doesn't put just mine out to bid, he has, um, a, a good handful at, at that time, so that he gets a, a good mix. We chose to go out to bid now in the, I think we are starting, would be starting the fourth year of a five-year contract, because we have, um, we have a need for an additional large copier at Woolwich that didn't get put into the, um, Woolwich project, and they, this year they, they made it through, but it was a struggle, I, I think mostly with their office, they had to leave it for larger projects, they had to leave their office to go down the hall, and, and so I told them that I would, if it wouldn't cost us any more money, I would check to see what we could do, and this company came back with being able to fulfill that need, they, um, cleaned up some of the older machines, older printers that we have in the district, and I, I don't know if you have this page in front of you, it's just a comparison where, um, it shows, for instance, that photocopies, we currently have thirty-five, will be down to twenty-eight, um, let me see, there were printers on here too, um, oh, network printers, they stayed the same, but they are being upgraded. These machines will all end up with, um, a five-year warranty on them, and one of the things that I find helpful is that in this five-year time, if one of your machines breaks down constantly, is breaking down, and machines break down, you know, but if it constantly breaks down and you're having a problem, you have the option to tell them, I'm tired of that machine, bring me a new one, and they're, they're obligated to do that. The maintenance contract is part of this, so you're paying a cost per, per print, and that cost per print this time is lower than the one that we're currently paying, so overall down, you can see at the bottom, um, the annual cost savings is thirty-one thousand. There's not a, a real way for me to, at the end of the year, to say, yes, here's the thirty-one thousand that we saved, because it's based, it's based on how many copies you do, and it's their estimate on how, how often things break down and everything, but I think that just having newer copiers, newer printers is just helpful in the district, so.
He's a rather commander.
He, he was very pleased with his, with his bid that came in, it is, is really amazing how, I, I It's really amazing how, I can't think of the numbers right off the top of my head, but you can take some of our larger copiers that are maybe thirty-thousand-dollar copiers, that he's getting for seven or eight thousand, you know, that they're willing to do. So you can see that there's a good markup in that industry. And so, and this, you know, obviously, this gentleman, this company gets paid. I don't actually cut a check to them, he gets it through the company's, a percentage, and I can't remember if it's, I think it's eleven percent that he takes from that. But all in all, I think that, in my mind, is well worth it, because when you look at the number of machines that there are, and making sure that those warranties are in place. And he, he is very conscientious, if you have problems with a vendor, which, quite truthfully, we've been very fortunate with the vendors that we've had in the schools, they've been very good. But if you, there've been a couple of times where I've gone to this company, Skip, and he feels a reflection of, that it's on his reputation if it doesn't flow smoothly. And so he, you know, he has stepped in before a couple of times for me. And so I think, you know, that he does a good job.
Any questions for Ruth? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve, any other further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? Okay, we'll move on to policies for first reading. There were two, they were emailed to you, I don't have printed copies, does somebody have printed copies? One policy is drug and alcohol use by students. The other is policy GCSB, employee use of social media. So please make sure you're familiar with these by July. All right, we'll move on to item thirteen O, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. We need to set our next meeting date and location. Do you have the time? I think we should. Twenty-ninth or twenty-second of July. Anybody have a preference on that? Is there one of those dates that nobody can make? All right, why don't we stay the twenty-second? And that location is yet to be determined. Morse Cafeteria. Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen point two, executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session? Seconded by Bill, seconded by Alan, all those in favor? Raise your hand.